Tuesday, September seventeen, twenty twenty four. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chair Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Davidson.
Present.
Commissioner Miles.
Here.
Commissioner Ratliff. Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Barcheck.
Here.
And Council Starnes.
So we do have a quorum. Please stand with me as we do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to do it?
Of course. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful, beautiful day. Or thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and to serve you. Lord, please bless this meeting. Guide the discussion and the decisions that are made here today, that they may be done in accordance with your will. Lord, we ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Do we have any citizens' communications? Item not on agenda. If you would stand at the podium, tell us who you are, where you live, and tell us what you want to address us with. First one, Evelyn Little.
Yes, sir. My name is Evelyn.
Hang on, hang on just a sec. Can you pull the mic down? Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Evelyn Little. I do not live on O'Kelly. I have friends that live there. They're veterans. And their street has been messed up for quite a few months. They water it down, but the watering is not helping. And they would like to get that repaired, but they are not supposed to be paying for getting that repaired. Whichever way it goes, it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed immediately. Because if the rocks get too bad, and if they hit a child, I'm afraid to tell you, somebody's gonna be in big trouble. But I do not live on that street, but I'm speaking for the veterans and friends that live on that street because they are not be able to be here today. And also, we need a hospital here. We don't need anything other than a hospital here. Because we have got a few disabled people, which is my family, that needs to be carried to the hospital. And I have to have a, carry them in an ambulance every time they have to go to the hospital and everything. So we desperately need a hospital in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Jeanette Behrens.
Hi, y'all. I tried to take notes from more organized. The question I have is that I have, with a non-agenda item, I live at one ten South Travis Street. We have a problem with, this is what, looking at my, my window, I see. I call the city for maintenance. This is North Avenue. North Avenue has been a rock road. Sometimes, I moved here in two thousand seventeen. It was not maintained. They have put, oiled it down, or they put some rock down on it. But when it rains, it goes over the railroad tracks and down North Avenue. As you can see, the city has not been taking care of the maintenance on it. There's weeds that grows out in the middle, and, you know, on the side of the road. And if you look on the other side of the road, on my side, that I didn't take a picture of, it's mowed. We mow all that. We have a non-maintenance driveway next to it, a road, and we take care of that. We mow all that back clear to a hundred and fifty feet of the railroad. So y'all are wanting us to put all this, these parking, redo the parking, parking spots and stuff, driveways? I think y'all city needs to do a little bit more than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
C, five C, five C, and five C. So the rest of y'all are gonna be speaking on five C. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Presentation, receiver presentation from me. Yeah. This is gonna get a little wacky here. So at the last council, at the last council meeting, we had some items that were concerning us. And I had a question on tree ordinance. Were we supposed to get together on that, or? So, concerning us, ordinance B, consider and take any necessary action on first reading of an ordinance amending the mobile food vendor ordinance to allow for drive-throughs. And the outcome of that was, they're going to revisit it at the second reading. And they discussed what they wanted to include in there. And then also, action item A, consider and take any necessary action on the Empire Sign Company. They had questions, just to let you guys know, about the brightness and the orientation. Did you want to speak on that?
Certainly.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So there is, there is a variance request that the planning commissioner had recommended to council, and council did authorize us to negotiate with the property owner on the variance. And they were, instead of, right, the request was for a pole sign, and the variance was, had to do with the brightness of that sign. They were fine with the brightness, but they asked us to negotiate with them to try to get them, instead of putting a pole sign in, to put a monument sign in. And they have agreed to put a monument sign in. So we're still working with them to try to get them to do a, one that has a masonry or a base that matches the facade of the building. I don't know if you've heard anything back from them or not, but right now, they have agreed to do a monument sign. The last I heard, it was aluminum clad, though, still.
Where's this at?
This is for the Dollar Tree.
And I kind of skimmed over a little bit about the first reading of an ordinance for amending the open and outdoor storage regulations, and that went back to the lawyer. Is that correct?
Well, they actually, they, they, they accepted the first reading of the ordinance, but they did request consideration of, instead of having the gravel parking, gravel drive for that, that it be an improved surface, drive for that drive-through. One of the, one of the issues that we talked about was the fact that a mobile food court is a temporary permit. It's not a permanent improvement to the property, and so we didn't know whether or not we were gonna require them, since it is a temporary permit, that if we would require them, if they had, wanted to have a drive-through, to put a permanent drive in. But I know that Ben is working on that, and I think that's on the agenda today for further discussion.
And this kind of is out of our territory, but it's not, but they also said, consider take any necessary action of the cost of the new surface material for O'Kelly Street, since it was brought up a minute ago, so.
Sure, they, they did act, or we did present to them with some options for O'Kelly that included a Vulcanized material that the county had recommended or suggested as might be an alternative. That was at a cost of sixteen thousand dollars. If you've all noticed, the, the street out here on four fifty seven, four eighty seven.
Four eighty seven.
Four eighty seven, excuse me. That the state came through recently and did. That's actually a chip and seal product. Now, O'Kelly was done supposedly as a chip and seal as well, but you can tell the difference in the quality of the workmanship that's been, and the, and the style of chip and seal that was applied. So we also had gotten a proposal from a contractor to do that out here. It was thirty-five thousand for O'Kelly. But then we talked to the contractor that had actually done it for the state. He didn't give us an actual proposal, but he said it would be approximately five dollars a square yard, or five dollars a square. But anyways, it was gonna come out to about fifteen thousand dollars. So we're still exploring that as an option as well. But what council, also, what I also explained to council is that we are working, Ms. Holly is working on a citywide assessment of all the streets in the city, because the streets in the city are very deplorable. And a lot of them need addressed, and so we're actually gonna come back to them in November with a, an overall assessment of all the streets in the city and make recommendations on improvements, including O'Kelly.
Thank you. Number five, action items, consider and take any necessary action in a recommendation to the city council regarding a preliminary plat submitted by Philip Vargas for property located in the six hundred block of Texas Street, also known as property ID one five one nine zero, Rockdale, Mylin County, Texas, into two blocks and twenty-four lots. Hi, Ben.
Good afternoon. So this is the second piece.
This be in the red tab?
So this is the second piece. So if you recall at your last meeting, you got a rezone request for a planned unit development. This is that property, and so this plat is reflecting those proposed items in that zoning. So you'll see on the lot widths that some are thirty, some are forty. I'll take you through staff comments. We've sent these comments on to the developer. He's preparing that with his surveyor to get those comments addressed. So on this plat specifically, we've asked for the right-of-way widths to be determined and show on the plat that serviced the development. There's some small changes that need to be made, specifically on lot nine, thirteen, and fourteen. They just did not draw in the back property line, so the, they do not have a backyard currently. Each lot needs to show that there's building setback lines, and those building setback lines would be in the legend portion of the plat. We did have a question for them, which I've talked to developer on, and we're gonna wait on the traffic impact analysis. But on Lee Street, that may service as their emergency exit in case there were an accident that blocked Texas Street at the intersection of Belton. So that way, those residents could get out. If that is the route that is proposed, then we'll have to work with them on what material would have to go down to support fire truck access. We've asked for them to provide a tree replacement plan, as well as identify all the trees on the plat. We've asked for the impact analysis, as mentioned. We've asked for the drainage documents. And then some small changes on the zoning description in the top left. They've said it's P D R one. Just to reflect how our ordinance is written, it should be R one P U D. Then the last one is we've asked them to notate what their phasing plan is. And so again, all of this has been sent to the developer. Nothing caught their hair on fire, and it's really just cleaning it up before, before final plat.
Silly question. What is the R one P U D versus P D R one? Is that, did we have some old nomenclature that's changed, or we need cleaned something up?
No, it's just, it was a misreference. I mean, their intention was for it to be planned development residential single-family. It's just the way, if you actually look at our zoning ordinance, it would actually be written out as R one residential single-family planned unit development, so it'd be P U D instead.
And we're still staying with the presented lot size?
That's right. Nothing has changed from that zone change request. The city council will see that in October, as well as seeing both of these plots together at the same time. And so this plat will be off of that zoning, so that zoning would have to pass before this preliminary plat could move forward.
So we don't even really have a good recommendation until they finalize?
It would go off of your recommendation off of the zoning. If, if you didn't see any issues in the zoning of that, when you recommended approval, then there shouldn't be any reason you'd have issues with the preliminary plat. But it is solely your discretion on that. Staff from a professional recommendation doesn't see any problems with it, other than it just needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Say that again.
Staff, from a professional standpoint, there's nothing on this plat that would prevent it from moving forward pending that that zoning gets approved. You know, there's just items that need to be cleaned up and documents that need to be submitted, which can be submitted at the same time construction plans are submitted.
Any word of approval with the condition?
All right, so.
I recommend approval, but the conditions cleaned up. Under conditions cleaned up.
Second stated.
I was just gonna, do you see any, any concerns about the thirty-foot lot width? I mean, I know when he presented that last time, that was kind of raised a flag to me, thirty feet. Because we, out there at Cornerstone, we, we thought forty feet was narrow, and now here we are going down to thirty feet.
I remember her talking about it at one point before, that we were working on building on the east side at one point in time, and they were trying to get smaller lots for smaller housing development at one point in time. I don't know if that had something to do with it, or?
Right, these units are smaller, and so they're gonna meet the same building setbacks that the cornerstone houses do. It's just, it's gonna be a smaller lot and a smaller dwelling unit. I believe they still come in over a thousand, don't they? So they're still over a thousand square foot house. They're just a more narrow type of housing.
The thirty, thirty-foot one, or the, let's see, it was a thousand to twelve hundred, and then the forties were four, twelve, twelve hundred to fourteen hundred, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what I just said, but it sounded good.
So same square foot, I mean, same setback, but smaller.
Smaller units than Cornerstone. So Cornerstone is around sixteen hundred to two thousand at most, it seems, and they're gonna be a little bit under around the twelve hundred range, probably, as their norm.
Is this an amendment to our existing? Are we opening a door that we can't close, or?
No, because this is all off zoning pieces, so it's off of zoning approval from your council.
And it's zoned as a planned unit development, which doesn't change our standard zoning.
Yeah.
So, and one plan unit, each planned unit development stands on its own.
These are your main concerns right here that you're gonna work on?
That, so yes, that's been sent to the developer. They're currently correcting them, and I expect to see an updated copy in the next month. Maybe not before council, but all those items will be addressed on the final plat.
Point of order, we, we have a.
What is the width right now for the city ordinance?
So current standards for just single-family zoning is seventy-foot lot widths, eighty-four hundred square foot lots.
And the front has to be?
Seventy.
So in, in the planned unit development that we, that was before you last week set out the size of the, the, the limits on the size. So this actually just kind of lays it out on paper and plats it, based on the controls that were established by the P U D.
Repeat, repeat your motion?
Okay. I recommend we approve under the, pending.
Can you read it back? Can you read back what he said?
Yes, he recommended it, continued on the pending items that Mr. Blanchard had.
With the cleanup, the pending cleanup, everything that needs to be done that you stated.
I'll second.
Okay, ma, a motion made and seconded that we approve with annotations. All those in favor, right hand? So it passes. Thank you. Action item B, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a preliminary plat submitted by Philip Vargas for property located in the seven hundred block of Texas Street, also known as property ID two zero zero seven seven and two three eight seven seven, Rockdale, Mylin County, Texas, into five blocks and two hundred and fourteen lots. That'll be under your green tab.
So this is the northern portion of that development. And it's gonna be similar comments, some differences in those comments. They have an obstruction on one of the street names, so you can't fully read it. It's supposed to be Cattlemen Drive. We just asked them to remove that obstruction, so the name is clearly spelled out. They did not provide the line size of the utilities in that area, so we'd asked them to do that. Again, we'd ask them to insert the building setback lines on the lots. We'd ask them to provide for their tree replacement plan and all trees that are currently on the lot. Provide the traffic analysis, the drainage documents, and then notate their phasing plan. So it's really similar comments, just addressed on the second plat that they've, they've submitted.
Total number of lots decreased by ten because?
Well, so it's two different.
Oh.
It's two different plats. So this one's two hundred and twenty-four, but if you look at the other one, they come in at twenty-four.
This one actually should have two hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, two hundred and fourteen. The other one's at twenty-four, so they haven't lost any lots.
And the phasing plan is not rendered, it's not developed yet?
It's not shown on here, so what they'll do is they'll notate what that phasing plan is on their preliminary plat, as well as all the other comments. They'll then create their preliminary plat that will be signed by yourself and the mayor, that they're approved to go towards final plat and construction plans.
And this is Republic Ridge subdivision.
You mean it'll come back to us once he cleaned it all up?
No. Since y'all are giving these comments, it's, it's a clear path forward, so they'll put those in. And then Doug has a signature block on there that essentially says that it's approved by the chair, and then there's approval to move forward for final plating. Then when they start the final plat, which will be a long time from now, typically in that phasing, whatever their phases that they define, you'll see those start coming in as final plats, which means that the infrastructure's in and approved by the city.
So this will be twenty-four plus two, twenty?
Two fourteen.
Twenty-four, is that?
Two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight.
I, I wanted to see how you did math. I was gonna let you handle that. But yes, two hundred and thirty-eight lots is what's proposed on this preliminary plat. If there's any changes, you'll see that typically in the phasing plan. So when it comes back for final plat, and they find out that this lot's not developable for whatever reason, they'll usually notate that on the final plat, so you'll know what those differences are.
We had some public pushback, saying Rockdale's not growing, and with six hundred out of Cornerstone and these two hundred here, we're eight hundred.
Actually closer to nine hundred, because six hundred and sixty at Cornerstone, and then you got two hundred and thirty-eight on this, you're. This is on Texas and Belton Street.
Rising Star. Do you know what that is? A church?
Yeah, and we call it northeast. We haven't, we haven't developed quadrants yet, but we're in discussion of. But, yeah. All right, so as presented, do we have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. We approve pending the cleanup recommendations, similar to the, to the last.
We have a motion? We have a second. All those in favor, right hand? Motion made, seconded, and passes. Now, that brings us back to those in the audience don't know, but they've organized me with notebooks now, and I'm not organized enough to operate the notebook. So bear with me. We'll get there. All right, I like it. I'm not complaining. I just gotta get my brain up to using it. Okay. Consider, I, action item C, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to city council regarding an amendment to the parking on improved surface parking ordinance, and I believe that this brings us to five C. Is that right? All right, Jeanette Behrens wishes to speak. Please go to the podium.
Hi, y'all. Hi, y'all again. Okay. I live at one ten South Travis Street. My, I have a question. At previous coun- Um, my, I have a question. Um, at previous council meetings and board meetings, there was mention of a grandfather clause. Is that for a few years, or how is that gonna work? Um, because if like in a few years, I mean, you're still gonna have to pay for it. I mean, I have gravel, I have part gravel and part cement. I mean, cement up by the house and then it's gravel. But we keep it trimmed, we keep it mowed, um, anyway. So that was a question I had. Um, there are about five, probably ten families in my neighborhood, cause I live off Travis, in Travis intersection with Patterson Center. So where Niels Berry lives with the junk, I am his neighbor across on the south side. So you get me? Where Niels is, where Niels is, we're on, we're on, like Brookshire's is here, then you got Aston, Austin Avenue, then you have Travis as we're going east. Travis Street, you have Niels. We cleaned up one spot of his, and now we got this. Ta-da. Um, so if you're going across, going across the, the railroad tracks, on the pink house, Mary Kay Pink House, you can't miss it. Only one on the block. Um, but there are, there's a neighbor that has a business. He does not have room to pull trailers behind his house, and so he uses his driveway. They have one, one truck for their personal, they have two, two business trucks. So he has a truck and a trailer. Trailer is parked back against his shed, protect his equipment, but put, you know, and then he uses the street for his other truck. Then there's, there's two, there was, my house is on the west side, west side of Travis Street. Going east side, you have a trailer park, a trailer that has no driveway. They park on the grass. Then you have another trailer that they don't, they don't have a driveway. Then you have the neighbor that has his bus, his business. And then, um, okay, we're gonna go back to my house, on the pink house, north, and my house, and then our neighbor on my, on my south side, she has gravel, dirt, whatever. Okay, so you're coming back to my house again, North Avenue. North Avenue is with all the brush and that doesn't get mowed on a timely basis. So you have the trailer that no driveway, then you have another house, they have a gravel driveway, they have two vehicles, and they use their yard. Then you go on, on down North Avenue, there is a trailer. They have dirt. Then you have another house, they have gravel. So that's just on my little L shape right there. I'm really, really concerned because I think you need to do wipe this out completely and redo it. Because it, it's crazy. Um, and I talked about, about the grass, okay, and then I'm talking about Niels Berry. We know where that is. He had two trucks that were yellow-tagged about a month ago, or maybe it was a little bit more. They said for a week and a half, they were not moved. I called the city and I called the police department. Not even ten minutes later, somebody had pulled one truck with a rope and was moving them. So there you got an informant. Maybe, maybe not, but how long has his mess been there? That's part of the planning and zoning, that's part of attraction. You got these nice, nice pools downtown, but you know, you can only put a Band-Aid on a pig, it's still a pig. So you need to look elsewhere. Why taxing, taxing the people, the water, the taxes, and now you want another tax? And then God, God fa, grandfathering in the driveways, when if I decide to move, I'm gonna have to put the, the cement driveway in, if that's what you're planning. But that's still gonna cost me, because if I, the new owner makes a new owner do it, they're gonna want money deducted from my sale. So you gotta really, really think, really think. I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Next, John Rush.
When the, when my garage door broke recently, I had to park the truck on the grass to allow the repairman access. I don't park there much, but it's occasionally necessary. Among the reasons given for this ordinance, the city alleges that dirt in the streets is caused by residents parking on dirt or grass. But if all of the current residential parking on dirt and grass were paved, Rockdale will still have dirt in the streets. Dirt accumulates at the northeast corner of Cameron and Ackerman and sometimes blocks the drain installed after the sidewalks were replaced. This dirt comes from the alley between a block of buildings and the post office, not from any private residences. The dirt on Main between Cameron and Bell similarly comes from the alley between office buildings, not houses with cars parked on grass. Dirt along Bushdale is generated by construction at the junior high school. Dirt on Brazos is from the chip ceiling on O'Kelly. Too many streets in town have holes and cracks that go beneath the surface to the dirt. When it rains, dirt washes out and is deposited along the curbs. Standing water in those holes allows mosquitoes to breed, compromising, compromising the public health, which was another reason given for passing this ordinance. If the city government is serious about limiting dirt near curbs and maintaining public health, it should resurface the streets and alleys. It should not threaten to take our vehicles. If dirt near the curbs is such a menace, why not invest in a street sweeper? At the previous planning meeting, someone said that rescinding the ordinance is not an option. On the contrary, this ordinance is not a need. We don't have to save it. A recommendation to repeal this ordinance and start over would be simpler and quicker than continually debating changes to it. I'd like to know what special interests are behind this. The only ones I can think of are the towing companies, and I retain doubts about them since they'll be the ones put in danger if it's enforced. What others do on their private property is their own business, short of starting an outdoor fire on a dry windy day. Parking their vehicles on their own dirt or grass is far short of that. I cede the floor.
Thank you, John. Then we have Denny Dunkle.
Denny Dunkle, seven-twenty-one, Hundred Dryup City. I haven't heard about this until very recently, but, um, the first word that came to my mind, and before I proceed, is it easy to have the proposal read to us? I mean, have you got a great big long thing, or can somebody quickly summarize what you are proposing to put forward to city council? Can somebody summarize that for me, please?
Yes, we're trying to make an amendment to an ordinance.
I wanna know what it says. I mean.
I really can't, I really can't address your questions.
Are you formulating? Are, are we at a spot right now where we are formulating a recommendation to city council from this board? Is that where we're at? Or have you already formulated something that you wanna present?
There was a previous, uh, ordinance that was amended one year ago. We had a grace period of one year, and then we were supposed to start implementing, and we're now looking at that again. Uh, that's what this is about.
So this is about enforcement of an existing ordinance?
We're at the enforcement stage of an existing.
After a year, after a year hiatus to whatever, I, I don't know what that was for, but. So this is about, are you still formulating a response to city council? Or are, are you just doing a yes or no, we're gonna start enforcing? Is that what we're doing here today?
I'm not really supposed to be answering questions. You're supposed to be talking to me, but the answer is yes, we're looking at.
Either up or down?
Yes.
On enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for, for bearing with me. Then, just based on that much, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking opposed to enforcement, and I'm speaking opposed, once again, to, to echo what's already been said, I think twice now, of scrapping that, that whole ordinance. And my basis, the first, there's more. I appreciate the technical from the man who just spoke. My basis just says hardship, economic hardship on the families and the people here, and what are you doing with this enforcement that is blessing and benefiting the people of Rockdale? I'm not seeing it. And I, I took a minute yesterday, current, just some current numbers to support my comment about hardship. Um, and I, you, you guys, you all may have already done this, okay? This may be old news for everybody. But I did look up median income for America twenty-twenty-one, which was quick and current. That's within three years ago. Median income means half the people are above this number and half the people are below it. America, sixty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-seventeen dollars. Half the people in the country make more than that and half of them make less. That's across the country. Texas, twenty-twenty-one, sixty-seven, four-hundred-four. Little over two-thousand dollars less than the national average. Y'all know where Rockdale comes in, and this is rhetorical. Does it come in at sixty-seven like Texas with a median income for this city? Does it come in at forty or fifty? No. Rockdale comes in at thirty-eight thousand, three-hundred-sixty-three, thirty-eight. That's a negative twenty-nine thousand and change below the average in Texas.
Comments noted, but your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing.
Yes, sir. Susan, please say your last name. Hey?
How.
How, okay.
Um, I live in eleven-nineteen Alcala Avenue, and before we get started, um, I have a neurological disability, so, um, my aunt is here with me, so sometimes I go blind and I may have to have her take over for me. That's why I reviewed the notes with her. Um, so, um, I did not come to the last meeting, so I don't know if I'm repeating some of the stuff some of you may have already heard. Um, I don't know if an environmental impact study was done regarding the erosion many of you mentioned was the reason this was passed. But I do know that the businesses were grandfathered in, um, and some of you spoke about the city easements were a big cause of it. But I'd like to get a copy of that, if that's available. I don't know, like I said, if it was done, um, to know where the residential driveways fell into that as the reason that this was passed. Um, also, um, I understand that gravel may be being allowed, but I heard at the city council meeting that that may be a temporary replacement. And after looking at the cost of driveways, that if you put in a driveway, the cost of replacing it later would be a lot higher. So if you end up having to put in a concrete or an asphalt driveway later, after a couple of years, after having paid for the gravel driveway, that would be a higher, almost double expense, and I think that would be, um, unfair to homeowners like us who are already strapped for cash. I think that would be irresponsible for the committee to be making us pay that. Um, also, I saw in the ordinance that you can't just leave a trailer in front of your house without being attached to a vehicle, and I don't understand why that would even be in an ordinance. We should be able to go to the grocery store and leave our trailer in front of our home or on our property without having to attach it to a vehicle and take it to the Walmart to get groceries. Why is that an environmental safe, safety or health condition? That's what environmental, I mean, that's what ordinance are for. And then how is Samsung pulling out personnel gonna affect all these ordinances you guys are passing? I mean, you guys are trying to bring in, you know, people to the town, and that's why you're, you're passing all these new ordinances that are putting hardships on this town when Samsung's pulling out person, personnel, and you're, you're killing us with these ordinances. So, that's what I had to say.
Thank you. There are no further items. No further signatures. Okay, so, going back, we're on. Consider to take any necessary action or recommendation to city council regarding an amendment to the parking on improved surface, uh, parking ordinance, and that will be under the orange. It's under the orange tab. Take it away, sir.
Okay, so in our last discussion, I wanted to highlight that we've still proposed to remove, no longer allowing people parking on streets. We've still proposed to remove the towing of vehicles. There have been some changes. They're gonna look significant from the last time you've seen it, but they are not. It is just listing it out. So what I'm gonna propose is I'm gonna read it line by line. I'll try to connect it back, and then as questions arise, cause questions will arise, we'll discuss it, if that is okay with you, Mr. Williams.
You're, you're, uh, referencing ordinance on the next page, correct?
So in section C.
Yes.
On parking on unimproved surfaces, we have now have six sections, and so I'm gonna read them line by line. If you'll let me get through all of it, and then we'll break it down from there on what the questions, cause some of your questions may be answered as we get to the further sections. So the first, it's gonna remain the same. It shall be unlawful for the owner, occupant, or person in charge of any residential lot or owner of a vehicle to park or to permit the parking of a vehicle on an unimproved surface, unimproved driveway, or unimproved parking area in the front yard or side yard of a residential lot. It then goes to section two, where it speaks on the improved surfaces. Improved surfaces for this section shall include a surface of bituminous asphalt, cement, concrete, or other material other than grass, such as crushed rock, gravel, or other materials, laid over subsoil which provides a hardened surface, resists rotting, provides sufficient water runoff, and is graded and drained of all surface to water. It then goes to section three, where it will reference section six below. So subject to section six is an affirmative defense to prosecution for the parking of vehicles at an existing residence on an unimproved drive or unimproved parking area, where's, I will. Where such unimproved driveway or unimproved parking area existed before the effective date of this ordinance, from the section is derived. However, the existing unimproved driveway or unimproved parking area shall be maintained in a fashion that will support vehicle traffic, not allow grass, weeds, or other vegetation to grow in the unimproved drive. And so to be clear, on an affirmative defense, it provide, it's essentially the exemption that we were speaking of, that it's, it is to their defense. So if they meet these requirements, they do not have to put that in. And we'll, you'll, you'll keep hearing that said, and so that's why I'm saying we may need to break it down section by section for further clarification.
Is this close enough to be called a grandfather clause?
This, this is what we're attempting to do. So we're spelling it out on each section on how you're getting your grandfather clause.
And there is not a timeframe attached to that?
Correct.
Thank you.
So then on section four, subject to section six below, is an affirmative defense to prosecution for the parking of vehicles at an existing residence on an unimproved driveway or unimproved parking area, where such unimproved driveway or unimproved parking area at the residence was issued a certificate of occupancy prior to the passing of this ordinance. Then in section five, improved parking surfaces installed after the effective date of this ordinance shall be considered legal, non-conforming, unless the improved parking surface is designed to conform with the current driveway standards and meets the current all-weather surface definition found in chapter fourteen. If the parking surface is improved in both design and standards set out in chapter fourteen, it shall be considered in full conformance. And then section six, any such affirmative defenses set out shall apply only to the areas where the vehicles were being parked and the number of properly licensed and registered vehicles that were parked in the front or side yard on the date of passage of this ordinance. All vehicles that are not properly licensed, registered. All vehicles that are not properly licensed, registered shall be in violation and shall be moved to a screened rear yard or removed from the residential lot. So what we've done with this ordinance is we've tried to provide that grandfather clause for existing driveways. We spell it out in each section on if, we'll break it down by section. So section two gives you your definition of what you're allowed to do. Section three essentially says if you're currently parking on unimproved surface, you have to maintain that from having grass or weeds grow in it on where you're parking. Section four, let's see. Gives that date of when you're gonna be considered legal, nonconforming by your certificate of occupancy. So it would be off of the date of this passage of this ordinance. Then section five gives that definition of legal, nonconforming. So what that section is essentially saying is since we have a specific definition for this section that we wouldn't allow for new builds when they put in a driveway. Because if you come in with a new home, you have to put in concrete, asphalt or a grass paver driveway. It's giving them the option to put in different surfaces and be considered legal, nonconforming. And then section six essentially is saying on the date of passage of this ordinance, you have a set number of vehicles that you've traditionally parked on an unimproved surface. You can't expand that nonconforming use, but you can continue that nonconforming use.
So if you have five vehicles that are legally parked today, you can have five vehicles from now on. But you couldn't have six or seven or eight?
In the front yard or?
Or side yard.
Side yards.
So that is the attempt with this, these lengthy sections that have been added is.
And I would just.
I would just add, so when this was passed, regardless of why it was passed, when I came in and realized that we were looking at the enforcement and Mr. Blanchard went out and did the windshield survey of this community and, and realized the extent to which it was gonna impact residents, we are, we were concerned about the financial impact of this.
For those that are in the audience, it was like one-third of the city noncompliant, right?
That's correct. And so we were concerned about the fact that this is a low-income community and the financial impact of this would be tremendous. And that is why we are proposing to amend it in this way so that the, this basically what this ordinance does is prevent the problem from getting any worse than it is currently from the standpoint of the number of vehicles that are parked on the grass as of the date that ordinance might be passed.
So I have four options available to me. Is that right? Let me, or tell me if this is right. A no motion would mean it would be the status quo as it's currently written. You could keep the ordinance, which is basically the same thing. And then you can amend the ordinance or you can void the ordinance, right? That's four options.
Yeah, a recent, a recent, you could recommend leaving the ordinance as it is, amending it or rescinding it. Now, the amending could be in a number of different ways. This is the way that we are suggesting that we might be able to do that, but there's, it is not all or nothing as far as the amendment is concerned.
So you've made some drastic changes from the original ordinance. Where did you get your most information from? Is this pretty standard?
Well, staff has been researching other communities and it's about a fifty-fifty split still. We've, we're about fifty in now and some exempt fully and some don't. And so we're trying to allow for an exemption, but keep the ordinance on the books. So that way it won't, it provides that legal, nonconforming status that we talked about last meeting where as you start improving your properties, you would improve your drive.
Good by the fact that we've rewritten this and put in that, that much rewrite, I'm assuming this is your final draft recommendation that you want us to present to city council?
Yes, I think this is ready to go back to city council. This has had an attorney write it if it has not been obvious in, in that reading. And so we, with our attorney feel comfortable if this ordinance is gonna remain on the books, that this would be the way to enforce it. That would not provide the unnecessary hardship that was expressed in citizens' communications on agenda items. But it would not expand your nonconforming use to make the problem any worse.
I, I have a question. So I know we, which section three is for part of the grandfather? Is that correct? So does that grandfather the property or does that grandfather the owner of the residence? Or does that grandfather just the, the occupant at the time?
It would actually grandfather the property to the extent that exists today. So if, if, if I, if I owned a home and I had five cars or three cars parked in the grass and I sold that to some, somebody new, they would also be able to have three cars parked in the grass. Now that legal nonconformance only lasts for six months?
Yeah, I mean, if a home remained vacant for six months, it use, it loses that existing.
So if they, if they moved out and they removed all the vehicles, then the person buying it would not be able to bring in additional vehicles to park in the grass. But if somebody, if somebody buys it and they move in three vehicles on the grass, right, you know, right to begin with, then that would not, they would not lose that legal nonconformance.
Where is that in this?
That is part of the legal nonconformance regulations. It's not, not in here, but it's part of the legal nonconformance regulations. And the other thing in that also, if they come in and, and say they tear the house down and rebuild the house, then they would have to, they would, they would have to, they would lose their legal nonconformance. You would at that point because he would get a new certificate of occupancy upon completion of the new construction.
How does that affect rental property?
It wouldn't affect rental properties anymore any, I mean, if you have somebody that moves out and somebody else that moves in, as long as the property doesn't remain vacant for, and, and without extra, additional vehicles parked in the grass for more than six months, then you would not have any. It would, that legal nonconformance would.
I hear you saying it, but I don't see it, so I'm a little nervous on that.
That's just how legal nonconforming is defined by law. So we don't need to necessarily reiterate state law.
Thank you.
So basically you're saying that if someone else moves in and they have two vehicles, but it's a five-vehicle property and they don't have two, if they, if they don't have any vehicle, any more vehicles, they can still have five vehicles as long as they moved in. Like so later on, two years later, the kid get old enough to drive, they can buy another vehicle and put it on there too, as long as it's not vacant completely.
No, so if they, if, if I have five vehicles parked in the grass and I remove three of them for more than six months, then my legal nonconformance reduces to that two vehicles.
It will reduce to three.
It would over time, you know, as they, as vehicles are removed. Now, that doesn't mean if I, I sell a vehicle, I can't buy a new vehicle and, and park it on the grass. But if it went for longer than six months, then they would.
If you sell a vehicle and then you don't buy another vehicle for another year, then you lost that.
Then you would not be able to park that, that vehicle in the grass. You'd have to park it in the driveway or on the street.
I think my biggest concern is who the hell is gonna keep up with this? How many vehicles and everything else? I mean, there, there's no way to enforce that. No way. Because you could go there and document, drive-by video. I know y'all recommended that, but what if they're at work when you drive by and video that? I mean, there, there's no way.
Or college.
I mean, it's just like, you know, if you leave, both of you leave and in three years we have someone else in your positions, who's gonna know that? I mean, of course it's gonna be documented, but who's gonna know how many vehicles were?
So the plan, in answer to your question, the plan is that we will actually do three different videotapes, one during the day, one during the evening, one during the weekend. And, you know, and then go by whatever has the most vehicles, whichever, whichever video has the most vehicles. And then probably we'll have to do that on an annual basis and maintain that, so.
So let me ask a technical question. When I present my options to the commission, no motion means the existing as written stays on the books. A motion to accept gets us this. A motion to accept or amend leaves room to amend or complete denial.
Right. Regardless of your motion, it will go to council for their, for their decision. But your recommendation, so a no mo, a no, no motion, basically it would just go to council with no recommendation.
Talk to me, Ben. You have what, forty hours tied up in this already?
Well, I mean, my hour is tied up, doesn't have anything to do with this. It's a higher job and so this is something that the council's asked for as long as you guys. And so I've, I've put my time in accordingly. But as far as how you wanna move forward is your discretion. This is just the best way that we can think of that would provide that legal, nonconformance aspect, not requiring everybody to put in a drive that did not expect it and budget for it this year, but not provide that use to expand. You can do away with the ordinance if you think it's unnecessary. You can keep it as is if you liked how the other ordinance was written. Professionally, I wouldn't recommend that. But it is solely your discretion. You're that advisory board of city council. And so your recommendation on however you seek would then go to council. So council will see this ordinance. I, I don't think, I think we're at a point where we need to get something in front of them because we've worked on this for a couple of months.
We're at the implementation of the existing ordinance, correct?
Well, the existing ordinance is not getting implemented. It's been addressed by Tim as well as council has agreed that that won't be enforced until a discussion has been had. And so I, I think it's time to at least get something before the city council so that way they can start to hash this out.
That's your recommendation right there. What you, your tagline just then was your recommendation.
Whichever way you move forward, I would recommend getting this to city council. Whether you like how this ordinance is written and you wanna show council that, if you wanna put that you don't recommend this ordinance and still send it to council. But I, I think it's time that they see this.
I'm gonna pause right here. Do any of y'all want to re, you want to rewrite this ordinance?
So this is basically like a fifty-fifty. So for the people that don't want it, people to be able to park on grass and for the people that want to stay parking on grass, so they'll still be allowed to park on grass. And then we'll still be moving forward to getting people off the grass. So that's basically what this is?
Yes, I've worked a lot of hours with the attorney and this is the best ordinance that we can draft that would address both of those, that you still have the ordinance in place, but you acknowledge that existing use and you allow it to continue under parameters that are defined by legal, nonconforming uses. So this is, I, I don't think this can be rewritten in any other way other than if this isn't the way you wanna move forward, then we'd have to scrap that legal, nonconforming idea.
I, I personally, I know originally was for this ordinance because, you know, we all talked about cleaning up the community and all that. And at the time, we didn't know how many people were in, how many residents were in violation. But, and I, I still like the idea of the ordinance. But I just feel like what you just talked about, how we're gonna video and I just don't think that'll ever stick. But I ju, I just don't see how you're gonna enforce that. I mean, it's our word, the resident's word against your word, basically, well, I had ten cars there, yeah. But when you, when I drove by and videoed, you didn't, but I drove by three times. Well, I worked long shifts or, or I was out of town. I mean, it, it's just gonna be hard to enforce that portion of it, I feel.
So for a little historical background, there was an existing ordinance. We amended the existing ordinance to include grass pavers or an improved surface. I took it to city council and they wanted more teeth in it. And we came up with what we have and y'all have discovered that we left out the other surface material. And we were trying to amend the, the options and the timelines, correct?
Right, we wanted to provide more material that would be more cheaper, appropriate alternatives to those that, that need or those that may have impervious cover issues. And so that was the reason behind it. And then after that discussion, it was, the exemption part was brought up from some citizens that that should be included. And so we've researched that. And like I said, we've, we're about fifty to seventy-five cities deep that have this ordinance, which is a common ordinance. And about fifty percent exempt in that, upon adoption, they exempt in some way that existing properties are not required to bring it up to standard, which is usually a legal, nonconforming type. And so that's what's mentioned when you improve your property. You essentially are gonna improve that drive when you get a new certificate of occupancy. And so we've tried to word that out in a way where we just, we provide both alternatives, that it's still an ordinance for new builds to acknowledge. So everyone in cornerstone can't park on their grass, for example. But those that have had a house here for seventy-five years and has never had a driveway can retain the use of that drive subject to not expanding it. And I understand Commissioner Barczak's point, it would be, it is hard to enforce. It is enforceable, but it is hard to enforce.
I think it's helping everybody at this point. You know, you're getting something moving forward, but you're also helping the people that been living here for years and got it. So they still get what they want. And you got new homes having to live, you know, with the ordinance, you know? So I think it's moving forward. I mean, it's not, both sides are giving something, you know? Both sides, so they're, they're not having to go redo and new stuff and all that. And like you said, it still stands the same if you sell your house. You don't have to fix it up or add cement or anything. You can still sell it and they can still have three vehicles or however many you have already there. You know, so I think it's moving forward and helping. You got something going forward, you know, versus just doing away with everything and then continue to be a mess, you know? And not saying it's a mess to park in the grass, because I like parking in the grass. I park in the grass sometimes too. But, you know, you still like, we're trying to get a good growth that comes here and we're getting growth whether we want it or not. So attractive things make people wanna move here, you know, versus people dropping off stuff because, okay, I can just park myself anywhere here, then I'm gonna bring my family here because they allow it, you know? So the people that have been here and they have been here all their life and you don't have to change. You know, you keep theirs the same. But people moving in, we want to make sure we get the good growth. We wanna make sure we get the people that's gonna take care of their property and they're gonna fix it up like they need. So we do have, we're moving forward.
I've got two questions from the floor. You were first.
I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you say anything about the trailer section of the ordinance or the fifteen feet within a mailbox. Now, for the trailers, I, I would say eliminate that because people have trailers. They're gonna not have them attached all the time. Now, the fifteen feet from the mailbox, I don't have a problem with that, but it's worded wrong.
Well, that's been amended. You didn't hear us discuss it because that was all.
No, no, we're not amending that. That's been an existing ordinance that has not been touched by staff. So the enforcement of that.
So this is not the complete?
No, it is.
This is the completed ordinance. The pushback that we got from some citizens was some questions on parking on the streets, towing your vehicles away, now mailboxes. And all of that was already existing, not touched by myself or any other city staff. It's already been an ordinance that's already been in place. You know, I have not amended that.
This is just an amendment to.
In that section, there was five sections at the time. And each of those are different sections. And we, all we did was add section C, which was parking on unimproved surfaces. So that's the section we touched. So in adding that, you know, we found it inappropriate to prohibit people from parking on streets and to tow their vehicles away for an offense of that nature. And so we've removed them. But as far as reviewing the mailboxes that, or the, the trailers, that is a separate issue that we can address at a, a future time, but it's not necessarily, it doesn't have anything pertaining to parking on grass.
The one-year grace period that was there and we're in the enacting part? That's our crunch line right now?
We're not in any crunch line right now as an enforcement because again, we've been told that we're not enforcing anything from city council until something has been addressed. But you don't wanna leave an ordinance unenforced on the books for a long period of time. So that's why I would make that professional recommendation that it's time to get the city council in one asset or another for them to review and start taking action as a body.
So this is, this is only regarding parking on unimproved surfaces. It does not have anything to do with parking in the street or trailers?
All those are already existing. All those are already existing, correct? And so, again, in some of those sections, it would affect parking on grass. So, we've taken them out, because if you're telling somebody they can't park in their grass, they can't park in the street, and then where are they gonna park? So, we removed it. And, you know, and then y'all, so it's not necessarily appropriate to, say, you're parking in grass, so we're gonna tow your vehicle. So, we've removed it. But as far as the mailbox and the trailers with parking on the street and all of that, it was an ordinance in effect already that we just essentially added something else to.
That was already enforced.
So, it's, it's in this ordinance, I guess, is gonna be my answer. If it needs to be addressed when that issue comes up, if, if that starts getting enforced for whatever reason, of people parking within them, that vicinity of a mailbox, then we'll address it at that time. But it's just not necessarily appropriate at this moment with how much of, we've put time into this section. We kinda wanna tackle one issue at a time. And so, we've, we've put our effort into the parking on unimproved surface.
So, we're not gonna review any of the rest of that. This is line item.
We can. I would suggest let's finish this first, and then if-
Say your suggestion. What, that sounded sweet.
Yes, I agree.
If, if there's issues in the future with mailbox, it's, again, I cannot be any clearer, already an existing ordinance. I'm not under any understanding that there's ever been an issue with it. With trailers as well, there's not too many trailers that are in violation that often, or that get cited that often. If it becomes a bigger issue, we'll deal with it as we get there.
Well, I-
Wait, hang on. Roar had one other question.
Two others.
Um,
No.
My question is, like with Neil B- Nils- Nilsberry, he has a vehicle that he parks in the front. But also, on Travis Street, in the corner of Cameron and Travis, there's always bricks and wood and stuff. PD moves them, but they're always there. So, when people come in, come in to go down Travis, you're gonna hit those if they've already hit them and didn't move them. So, there's gonna be situations that you're gonna have to enforce some type of thing. Some type. It's not picking on the individual. It's causing other situations in, in the community in safety. Um, that's what I was, you know, that's what I've, and I'm, and I have another situation where there's friends of mine, there's a house, they rent a, they rent rooms out. There's four vehicles. Because two people have their each vehicle, and they're a couple. Then you have two, the owner, and then another person owns a room. So, what if they have, so if they, so if they have two couples renting a room, they each have vehicles. So, that's gonna increase the parking when they only have a two driveway, two-car driveway. And they end, they, they, wait, it's on, um, Oak Nelly. So, and they're at the end of the drive, end of the road where there, where it's a, it's a dead end. So, you got people over here that's parking in the, in the grass, and you got these people over here. But I'm just saying, if you have rental, because with Samsung, where the community are, where the economics is, people are gonna live, live together. So, you're gonna have to deal with that.
Yes, okay.
Well, I guess, um, they're not gonna, 'cause I was at a question about parking in the street, but I guess that's not being amended, right?
Well, it's removed. Parking on the street is proposed to be removed.
Oh, that's being, okay.
Yeah. So, parking on the street's no longer in the ordinance.
Okay.
And then, the impoundment of vehicles is no longer in the ordinance. The question was asked about the mailbox portion and the trailers, which has not been touched.
Well, I will say thank you, Ben, for all you have done. Uh, I think, I, I've listened to all the comments, and I think you met everybody's concerns, mostly everybody's, you know, by giving more options as far as the sand, gravel, whatever, you know, and then allowing grandfather, basically. Uh, so, I recommend that we move forward and-
I guess I, I might, one, one, I had a follow-up, sorry. So, the gravel will stay in there? That's not gonna be like a temporary thing? The gravel will stay in there, and it won't be in, like, you can have gravel now, and then in two years, it won't be taken out? It'll be a permanent thing?
Right. So, it's, it's not appropriate to require one thing and then unrequire it later. You always, you typically provide that non-conforming status. I'll use the example of structures.
Well, not, I mean, not for the grandfather, but-
It, it's, it's, it's the same concept.
Why don't you reread number two, so they, um, make it clear?
You want me to reread number two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. So, what we're allowing is improved surfaces for this section shall include surface of bituminous, asphalt, cement, concrete, or other material other than grass, such as crushed rock, gravel, or other materials laid over subsoil, which provides a hardened surface, resists rutting, provides for sufficient water runoff, and is graded and drained of all surface water. And so, to answer that question, the best example I'll use is a structure. So, say you build the structure in the nineteen fifties, and the building setback lines were five feet at the time. You're not, when you update your zoning ordinance to require nine-foot side setbacks, you don't go in and tell them that now you have to move your structure four feet this way to meet that requirement. It's that, that's what the legal non-conforming status does, and that's what we propose for this ordinance. So, since we're allowing for those improved elements only in this section, those elements will exist. And then, upon the, if there is a change twenty years from now, or however on this ordinance, that legal non-conforming status should remain.
Okay, before I call for a, a vote or anything, does this meet the initial charge from council for us that, at that time, it was add more teeth to the ordinance? That was the original charge for the rewrite to include grass pavers. We still meet that?
Correct.
They've kicked it back to us to rewrite, to allow some, for some more surfaces. And this meets that?
Correct.
And your recommendation you just made a minute ago said?
So, the staff recommendation is to move this ordinance forward. But what staff would ask is if you're not comfortable with that, to move something forward to the council. If you don't want to make the recommendation on this, then don't recommend approval. Just send it to council, because I think it's time that they see this, and they start to hash this out, so that this can be resolved. But as far as staff recommendation, this is, provides the most inclusive material to put down. It does not allow the problem to expand, but it also acknowledges existing uses, so that they may remain.
So, our best, best hope is that we maintain our current thirty-three percent, thirty-five percent non-compliance, right?
So, upon adoption of this, that will not expand. It will, that number will only slowly go down as people either naturally improve their property. Property sit vacant for a while and then lose that existing use. So, it's not gonna increase. And then, also, this ordinance being on the books prohibits new subdivisions, like the one that you saw today. They cannot start parking on their grass. They're gonna have to park on an improved surface, because they will not have certificate of occupancies before this is adopted.
Before I ask for a, a motion, we still have the four options available to us, basically, right?
You have the option of not making any motion. You have the option of approving this amendment, or you have the option of
Amending it?
Any amendments that you may propose upon these amendments. Yeah.
And we can't void the ordinance, or we-
You can. If you want to say that this isn't sufficient, you just don't want it on your books anymore, you can make that recommendation to city council.
Oh, no, I'm not gonna make-
We will.
They have to, they have to say anyway. I mean,
Right.
Even if we recommend that, you know, they're gonna-
Yeah, they have to say.
They will, but they do, um, look to y'all's recommendation, since you are their expertise board on this.
And this compares favorably with any close by city, cities?
Fifty percent.
I would say that, that most cities actually just prohibit it outright. But most cities aren't in the condition that we are, so we really can't compare ourselves to other cities. What this does is get us as far along as we reali- realistically can under the con- under the circumstances we have, being a low-income community with a, a large number of violations.
So, this has a minimal impact. We call it grandfather clause, but we have enough that it's not gonna imp- uh, impact situation as it is.
Right. So, as the city grows, the percentage of houses that have this will be reduced because of the, by volume. And over time, as, as things change, people, you know, expand, improve their homes, or do whatever, uh, make improvements, the number of violations will go down.
And down.
So.
All right. Any further questions? Any further questions?
I make a motion that we approve pending, uh, I mean, uh, I make a motion that we recommend approval.
For amended, for this, for amended, uh, anything?
Amendment to parking on improved surface parking ordinance? Did that help you?
Yep.
Say it again. What, what do we have over there, Shannon? What, what?
Recommend approval of amendments presented?
Sure. We need a se- we need a second. We'll need a second on that.
Well, he was a second. I was, I was a motion, he's second.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Yes, sir.
Then we pass this on to council. All those in favor, right hand. Three to one. Are you gonna present this, or am I?
I can present it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Blanchard will do that.
I'll be back, I'll back you up, sir.
But you have the other- You have the other ones.
I'll probably be back way back. All right. Here we go then. Uh, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to city council regarding an amendment regarding the mobile food vendor ordinance. Yee-haw. Here we go.
So, this, um, you are gonna recall this. You just saw it. But the council had some things that they'd like to see done to the ordinance. Um, specifically, they wanted to, if you refer yourself to section three, that's gonna be one of the small differences in the last time you've seen this. Instead of allowing gravel as that driveway surface for mobile food vendors, they'd wanted it to be a permanent. So, we've referred to the all-weather surface definition in chapter fourteen, which, if you remember, you recently amended. So, that's concrete, asphalt, or gravel that they will have to put down as they drive through.
Concrete, asphalt, or grass paper.
Mm-hmm. Is it all-weather? Oh, I'm sorry. Grass papers. And so, that, that's what they're saying, that they want, they want it to be more of a permanent instead of temporary use.
So-
Who's saying that?
That is the city council. So, this was city council, and they've kicked it back.
City council kicked it back with two concerns. They were, they were on that, and they also had the issue of bollards.
Right. And so, we'll address that one next. That's the next.
Yeah.
So, what I've put in there is some ideas, because they, they wanted there to be a clear visibility of what was, where the car could go. And so, how I've worded it is a protective measure such as bollards, fencing, concrete blocks, or other suitable means to differentiate the walk-through area, the drive-through area, and where the unit sits must be installed to prevent the vehicle from hitting the unit and prevent the vehicle from encroaching on the walk-through area.
Is this where I was supposed to take a couple of councilmen to see? And I promised to buy them lunch?
Yeah, you promised council member Milton.
Oh, man.
Uh-huh.
Oh, man. I think I bow out of this one. Let y'all have it.
I just, this is just for the drive-through.
Correct. This is-
Like, for, for instance, um, seven barbecue or whatever, they, they're, they're good.
Right. Because they're not doing a drive-through service. So, they, they meet current ordinance standards. We're just, the attempt of this amendment was, the question was asked if, why we don't allow drive-throughs, which-
We don't currently have a drive-through.
We don't. No, no one's ever asked, but if they did, it's prohibited. And so, they wouldn't be allowed to anyway. So, that's the attempt of this ordinance amendment, is to, if we're gonna allow it, put these protective measures in place to prevent any accidents from happening to the best of our ability.
And this was brought to our attention through the, uh, public meeting that we had, right?
This was brought by a citizen during one of your regular meetings that does operate in a mobile fin- food vendor unit. And I believe that they want to, to do a drive-through.
Well, it was, it was brought to our attention. It was a short, we knew, we didn't address it when we wrote the ordinance, right?
And so, if it's something that you're still in favor of, that's the change, those are the small two changes that we've made, is instead of allowing gravel, we've only prohibited to allow all-weather surfaces. And then, we've just added more protective measures to differentiate where a car's supposed to be and where it's not supposed to be.
And that aligns up. Is that a standard ordinance somewheres, or?
A lot of communities are silent on this. So, this was through staff research on how successful mobile food vendors operate, because there are places where there are drive-throughs for mobile food vendors. So, we've, with the help of that citizen, we've investigated some and s- and seen what they have done to differentiate where cars can go. And that's where these ideas came from.
Questions? Yes, like, she was first.
Yes. I didn't, I didn't write, sign up to, to speak on this, because I wasn't sure I understood, uh, I wasn't sure I understood this. But I have been to places like Taylor, where they've had the, the vendors, and to Cameron, where they've had the vendors for, uh, fairs and things. Uh, but what this is addressing is like a more permanent park? Okay. But it does, if we had food vendors that came for entertain at, uh, one of the fair activities, this would not affect them? This would be?
Only if
Okay.
they had a walk-up side of the trailer and a drive-up side of the trailer.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's an omission on our part. Four years ago, there were no drive-up windows, basically.
Yeah.
Everybody walked up to a window.
Right. I've never seen a drive-through, yeah.
We omitted that. We're trying to formulate uh, an ordinance.
Okay.
Or in addition to an existing ordinance, or however you want to say it.
Okay. Because I've never seen the drive-up, so that that was not, uh, that has not been an issue for me. I didn't understand exactly what this, what this was. So, thank you for clarifying that.
The world is morphing at an alarming rate sometimes. Somebody will create a food court, and then everybody's gotta have a food court.
Yeah. And, and, and when Taylor has done all their wonderful activities downtown, they've had a lot of food vendors that have been there on the street side, and people walk up. And of course, they coordinate off, uh, with, to protect the people walking around. So, that would, if we had something wonderful downtown with the food vendors, and they would coordinate off, and it, it, this would not, doesn't apply to that.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That was my question.
That was your question, too. Woo, good question.
Knock it out.
Um, I know a business that was wanting to expand, and they are planning to get a food, a food, um, a food vendor. Um, and they are planning, they have seen it in Austin, and they have, you know, the, their ideas are creative and stuff. So, um, yeah, I can see that they want to have both. They want to have those that can come up, park, and walk up, and those that want to drive in.
And this is strictly for the safety? I mean, because if you-
Right. Yeah, no, I completely understand. And I know the location where they're planning to, their plans are. And there is a driveway. There is, there is a rock driveway. But, um, I don't know exactly their location of where they're gonna plan to have their parking for the pa- people that are, are pedestrian, walking up and purchase, and then driving.
Thank you. So, I guess there's three areas we can go here. Accept it as it's written to provide for a drive-up, uh, service. Reject it, which means you can only have walk-up trailers. Or stick our head in the walls and pretend it'll never happen here.
Right. So, this did go to city council one time. They didn't take any action on it. They just, they wanted to see those changes. And so, we've brought it back to your attention with those changes recommended by council.
They did have the first reading of it. That was the only-
Yeah, I've got it written down. If they, hold on a sec. Yeah, they're gonna-
They, they had first reading, but they didn't-
They kicked it back.
They didn't approve it. They didn't deny it either. They just did not approve.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we move it forward to the council as written, or amended.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded that, uh, we present it to council for their, uh, action. All those in favor, right hand? Pass this for.
They're gonna have both, then? Allow both?
Good. They're gonna allow both, as long as they meet the requirement. Yes, ma'am.
Consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to city council regarding an amendment regarding outside storage ordinance.
Okay, this has changed significantly since you've last seen it. I, I've talked to the attorney. And the, the way we did noted hate it after where we prohibited it, I'm, I'm sorry, we exempted outdoor merchandise for sale at the end of the section. She thought it could be a little bit better. And so, we've prepared an ordinance where, if you look at section two, there's two definitions now. So, we define what open and outdoor storage is, which is the keeping in an unroofed or open area any goods, material, or merchandise in the same place for more than twenty- Which is the keeping in an unroofed or open area any goods, material, or merchandise in the same place for more than twenty-four hours. Outdoor display of merchandise as defined herein is not included. Also now, then we have since added the outdoor, outside display merchandise, which is a po- a primary land use. Providing outdoor storage or display of commodities, materials, goods, equipment, or mer- merchandise. And its normal day to day business activities, this definition excludes new and used sale or lease of automobiles, motorcycles. Recreation vehicles, boats, or water crafts, this definition does not include temporary outside sales.
Woo, you did your homework there, son, come, I'm commending you.
Well, the attorney's a lot to thank for this because she's had experience with this ordinance.
I take it back then.
And so. So this, the way that this is currently written with that. They're not considered outside, and so if you want to sell things that would be deemed, that's not defined in this section, there's actually gonna be a permit now. That you'll notate that for this week, I wanna sell these items outside of my storefront, so that way we can regulate it. That's the proposed.
And that's by a paid permit, or is that?
Mm-hmm, it's a permit that would come through my office, and they would get a permit. If approved to sell those for this time period to this time period, so it would accommodate your special events where. Uh, multiple businesses may come outside and sell T-shirts and goods that may not be. Addressed as in this definition that was provided. Because we didn't, the way we had it worded is we allowed for any merchandise for sale to be outside. And the argument that, not the argument, but the discussion that I've had with the attorney is, we don't wanna open that door because then you could put. Something that really isn't for sale outside and you could put a price tag on it, and then that's merchandise for sale. And so we're trying to prevent that from happening, but acknowledge existing businesses that perform outdoor storage such as Tractor Supply that we mentioned. The, the other ordinances, this would allow what they do, but also input a permitting process for things that wouldn't necessarily be allowed.
Looks pretty comprehensive and it has teeth in that number seven. By setting the price, so you know it upfront.
And you, you, I didn't get the clarification on if you have, you have to pay for the permit? Okay.
It's number seven.
Yeah, it's a temporary permit, for a hundred dollars is what is defined in the ordinance, if you think that's too steep, we can amend it. But that, that was the proposed language.
Um, we had the clearing up, well, it was a church, he had outdoor sales and stuff, is this.
Churches are exempt, religious, uh, permit is not required for civic, religious school, government, or nonprofit organizations.
So this is for your commercial areas, is essentially what that's saying, is because residential has garage sales, this doesn't prohibit garage sales. Garage sales have their own ordinance where I think they can have like three a year or something along those lines that, that regulates that, but this is to allow. To acknowledge what our concern was, to allow what we already allow, but we just don't wanna open the door up for anything to be deemed outdoor. Merchandise for sale, is the goal of this.
Wasn't there also a question about screening or fencing?
There was, and so that's what was in the original, and we're not necessarily requiring that in this. Now, of course, if it's not allowed outside, they'd naturally have to screen it or put it in indoors to where you can't see that.
Question, oh wait, I had.
How does that affect Girl Scout cookie sales in front of grocery stores? It won't.
It doesn't.
They don't have to get a permit.
No.
The school kids, the, the school's selling all their T-shirts in front of Brooks and Brothers, they won't.
No.
They won't have to get a permit.
This is regulates commercial businesses and commercial areas to obtain a permit to do outdoor sales that aren't already allowed. So it's not anything that has to get a permit, it's just, it's specifically listed, yes sir.
Can't think of the business, but next to Texas Fajita, they have all the, the yard art and all that stuff? How, how does that fit in?
I have to read the definition and make sure that they're covered, but the goal is to have them covered, the goal of the, the permit is for more of a pop up type of thing.
Okay.
So think of uh the downtown events, I think where they do the sip wine and shop, where they, they do the. They go outside and sell their merchandise, that would be something that we would look for as a temporary permit. Not necessarily something that's mo- like monument signs downtown as well, they're not, they won't have to get a permit every week.
So like if we have an event though, each vendor will have to come in and get?
No.
No?
Usually, it would go by event, it should go by event.
Got you.
So whoever's running that event, so if Rocktoberfest that's coming up wanting to have outdoor sales, they'd essentially come and request a permit in this area. To allow for outdoor sales from this day to this day.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a approval that we uh pass this forward to council for approval.
I second.
Motion made and seconded that we uh pass this on to city council, all those in favor, right hand? Motion made, seconded, and carries. Oh boy.
Ten minutes over.
Yeah, I know.
Someone was ten minutes late.
Did you want to address, did you?
I, I wanna address the board real quick, um, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things and say a couple of things before we leave. Um, several years ago when I was approached to, to come onto the board, um, uh, some of the guidelines. Um, of being on this board, um, was brought to my attention, one was brought up that, due to the fact that I had. Multiple properties and multiple businesses that, that I could be on this board, um. Our city manager didn't even live in the city limits, so I didn't even think anything about it, when Mr. Willie come on board, it was brought up and I said, I, I questioned it then. Um, and since then, now with all this going on, everything that's been said and done. Um, I think the guidelines are being looked at again or differently or being brought up again. And I just feel like, um, one of them that's being brought up multiple times is, once again, living in the city limits. And so at this time, I think it's best if I just resign, step off the board, let somebody who is in the city limits. Um, come on board, and uh that way we'll all be in, I, I do understand that I could bring out the term, you know. And, and be final through the term, but you know, there's a lot going on, and it is what it is, and back then. I mean, I was approached to come on board, you know, and never thought anything about it, um, now, since things are different. You know, I think it is, I feel like, um, I have enjoyed this board, uh, I've contributed to it, I like it, it goes along. With what I do for a living, so uh it's all good, but at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna resign and let someone else, and we've had a lot of people here now. Maybe they'll come on, there's a lot of city, city people who live in the city limits and, and maybe they'll come on, so that's what I'm gonna do at this time.
As chairman, I appreciate all that you've done for us, uh. Makes me a little bit nervous to see you go because of what you contributed to us, and it makes me really nervous, and we're now down two commissioners. Two empty chairs with the possibility of a third coming up in February. It's my problem, not y'all's, thank you for what you've done for us. With that being said, it's three thirteen and I hereby adjourn the meeting of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. The Planning and Zoning Commission.